All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to bring the meeting for February 10th, 2014, to order at this time. And I would ask council members if they have any added items at this time. Seeing none then, I would then ask for an adoption of the agenda as presented, please. Counselor Barishow.
Thank you, worship. I move the adoption of the February 10th agenda as presented.
Thank you. Those in favor, that is carried. And we will be, the absence of Counselor Harper, she is on vacation and will not be at this meeting this day. Moving down to page two, please, of your agendas, adoption of previous minutes. I would like a motion on the floor for that, please. Counselor Duryea.
Thank you, worship. I move that the minutes from the February 27th, 2014, regular council meeting be adopted.
Thank you, Counselor Duryea. Does council have any questions to the minutes? Somebody does. Mr. Chant. Okay. Very good. No questions then, I would then ask for a motion to accept these minutes. Those in favor, that is carried. Thank you. Moving down to our presentations and delegations portion of our agenda, please. Page seven, item 4A. Our delegation today in our gallery is a group of ladies and gentlemen from the Sons of Norway. And they are requesting proclamation for Norway for a day at this time through our CAO. I would like introduction.
I'm not sure if the delegation are here to speak today, or, okay, yes, they are. And so I will have them come up to the microphone and introduce themselves. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Barb. Just an introduction, please, of your name.
Sure. Thank you. Is it on? Okay. Yes, thank you. My name is Barb Olson. I'm with the Sons of Norway here in Oles. And I've brought some of our members with us today to help with our presentation. And in the back row, Noreen Olson, her husband Ralph Olson from Karstares, Louise Cobrested from Oles, Leif Turning from Karstares, and my husband Mel Olson from Oles. And thank you for entertaining us today. Do you want me to just begin, or do you want?
You certainly can. Mrs. Olson, I would just remind council that we have a lovely handout that Mrs. Olson has given us, if you so wish to follow. Thank you.
Yes, we are asking that Oles, the town of Oles, consider proclaiming Oles, Norway for a day. On May 17th, 1814, Norway became an independent country. It's signed the Norwegian constitution, and it is the second oldest constitution that is still in existence today. It is based on the American constitution. In Norway, that's a big day. It's very special. On the table, we have a few of our crafts and artifacts. And I have two calendars showing kind of, or to give you the flavor of what happens in Norway on May 14th. It's a parade of flags, it's a holiday, it's a very special time. The Sons of Norway is an international organization comprised of lodges in Canada, the U.S. and in Norway. And it was begun in 1895 by 18 Norwegian immigrants. And they realized that there was a need to band together to help each other in hard times. So that's how the Sons of Norway was begun. The mission is to promote and preserve the heritage and culture of Norway and to celebrate the relationship with other Nordic countries. And there are three arms or components of the Sons of Norway. The fraternal, this is where we encourage volunteerism and fun and fellowship and food within our lodge and other lodges and within the community. The foundation is a very strong component as well. And that's a fundraising arm whereby we are able to present scholarships to young people going to colleges and universities. We also sponsor camps, language and arts camps. The one that we're most familiar with is called Trollhagen. And there's a camp each year at Alex, at Deer Meadows. And this is where probably close to 100 young people and adults attend. And it gives everyone a week to take language lessons, music, dancing, chip carving, rose mauling, needlework called hard anger. And the other arm is the financial arm. And in Canada, we're not so involved with that. That's more of an insurance sales in the U.S. So basically, we're a fraternal organization and we have a strong component of the foundation to promote the history and culture. Our lodge just celebrated our 30th anniversary here in Oles. At that time, I think our membership was close to 200. We're now down to about 35. But of the members that I introduced you to, these four are four of our charter members. So they were here when the Sons of Norway Lodge was formed. We try to, we do fundraisers and we, oh, I should say, too, we have members throughout the county, Three Hills, Oles, Troschu, Boden, Innisfail, Karstares, Sundri, Red Deer, I guess you've got it on your list there, Erdri, and even Calgary. And some of the ways that we're involved in the community are, we support the hospital auxiliaries in Oles and in Didsbury. We conduct bingos at the Mountain View Lodge. We also have a birthday celebration at the Chinook Winds Lodge in Karstares. And we provide entertainment, cake and ice cream for the residents there. Of course, we present a wreath at the Remembrance Day Ceremony. Up till quite recently, we also had a section of Highway 2A, south of Oles, that we kept clean. That just got a little bit too much for us. We fund through the foundation Ski for Light, which is an interesting thing. People who have trouble seeing, they're not necessarily totally seeing impaired, do cross-country ski. So we provide someone to ski with them, and they have competitions and so on. It's kind of neat, a neat thing. And of course, we support the Trollhagen Language and Culture Camp. We've also provided information sessions at schools, schools and museums and churches. And we have culture classes where some of our members demonstrate and get us working on projects so that we can keep some of these cultural skills alive. And so our guests, or I should say, our members and guests plan to celebrate May 17th this year. Traditionally, we've met here at Town Hall, or at least for the last few years. We've got permission to raise the Norwegian flag. And so we gather and we sing and we have a parade of flags around to the front entrance and raise the Norwegian flag. And then we go for a delicious brunch. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much, Mrs. Olson. It is quite a parade. I have had the opportunity to be involved with assisting them with their parade and meeting the lovely members to the club. The first question I would have is, the 200 people that have been throughout the last 30 years, are they still within the area, majority of them?
Well, some are. I would think we've lost a lot of people to age and passing, yes.
Okay, thank you.
The Scandinavian and Norwegian community has been very, what would you call it, prominent in this area. There is a book that I have on the table called Scandinavian Connections. And there's quite a section on this area and, well, from, I shouldn't even say from where, because it is a large area. And there have been many people who have settled in this area from the Scandinavian countries.
Thank you. Council, questions? Counselor Barishow?
I don't have a question. I just wanted to thank you for, you and your group, the Sons of Norway, for all your work in the community. And we rely on groups like yours. And it's sad that, I guess, that we have community service groups who are having a hard time recruiting members. And hopefully, your group can find some more people to kind of keep things going. I was just going to make the motion, your worship.
If you could make the first motion, I'll separate these two, they're two different discussion.
I would move that May 17th, 2014, be proclaimed as Norway for a day in the town of Oles.
Most certainly. I did see a note that it did fall on a Saturday. I do not believe that had been a problem in the past for raising the flag. The staff of the town of Oles is very accommodating in that matter, and I'm sure we can do that again this year.
Thank you very much.
Most certainly, Mr. Wagstaff can speak to you. I don't know really who you spoke to in the past, but it worked very well.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor then to proclaim Norway for a day, May 17th. Any further questions or comments? We call for the vote then, those in favor. That is carried. I'd encourage you to come down and see the majority of the attendants do wear their authentic costumes. The women look beautiful. Second motion, please. Counselor Bennett.
I move that permission be granted for the raising of the flag of Norway at the town offices from sunrise on May 17th, 2014, to sunrise on May 18th, 2014.
Thank you. Questions? I note that there is a policy that our Debbie did attach to this, and it does comply. Those in favor, that is carried. Thank you. Thank you very much for bringing your memorabilia for council to view, and I look forward to seeing a little bit more of that in May.
Thank you very much. And you're all invited to come. We would love to see you and host you on that day.
I'm sure our community services department will get ahold of you if there's any questions then from here.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for taking time to be with us today. And we're very proud to be able to support you in this, what, 200-year anniversary? That's awesome. We're very proud to have you in the community and be able to celebrate that with you and be a part of that. You're welcome to stay. Okay. We'll move forward in the agenda then. Item five, business arising out of the minutes. Seeing none. Item six, bylaws. We have no business out of the, for bylaws. Item seven, unfinished business. Seeing none, we'll move down to number eight, new business. Page 14, please. At this time, after reviewing this in the agenda, and a very brief discussion I had with our CAO during agenda preparation, I would ask at this time that our CAO please explain the purpose and why this is being given the authority to sign off on development and building permits. And I do know that I have counselors that are just wanting to understand the process. Mr. McGinnis?
Thank you, worship. I would be pleased to explain. The Section 210 of the Municipal Government Act allows for council to proclaim designated officers with signing authority. That has to be done by bylaw. We do not have a bylaw in the town of Oles for designated officers. So by virtue of not having a bylaw, the town has one designated officer, being the chief administrative officer. The MGA says that the CAO can delegate duties, but we don't have a process to delegate the duty. So through the process of putting together this request for decision, we've come to the conclusion that we've got some gaps in our policy. So we don't want to hold up signing off on very important development documents, but I'll be working with Deb to come up with a policy on the delegation of duties for signing authorities, or suggesting that we do come up with a designated officer bylaw in the very near future. But for right now, the wording is such that the delegation will come from the CAO, being the only designated officer of the association. I do want to add a couple of other words to the recommendation, but I will stop there and ask for questions at this time.
Yes. Are we still in the search for a development officer with credential?
We are talking about what we need in that position, and we're talking about whether it needs to be a management position that manages people. But we do know that we do need a planner on staff. So that's the discussion that Scott and I and Human Resources are having at this time.
I'll open the floor to council questions. Counselor Overwater?
Thank you, worship. Mr. McGinnis, with the appointment of Carrie Kelman and Scott Chant as designated signing authorities on this process, not taking away from anything of either one of their positions or their knowledge now, I'm just wondering if we don't have an actual development officer with the knowledge for that position. We just appointed Mr. Chant to, I believe it was operations, interim operations. I don't want to take anything away from Mr. Chant, but is this going to overload him with his new responsibilities already? And with Carrie Kelman being new in her position, will she have the knowledge in order to sign off on some of these permits?
So clarification, this is not a designated officer appointment. This is a delegation through the designated officer, which is the CAO. So there is no designated officer position being created or by proxy by law for designated officers. So between Carrie, myself and Scott, absolutely we'll continue to manage the workload of the application process through the planning department.
Thank you, worship. So just to clarify again, we are actually in the process of looking for a development officer with credentials.
Mr. McGinnis, I believe what we're looking for clarity is, do we have fully qualified staff that understand the process on development permits and/or building large projects? So what I do hear you say then, that the CAO is saying he is qualified and takes full responsibility for all the building and development, and will work through those other staff members to sign them off and move forward. That's what I hear.
Just to be clear, we're not in the process of recruiting at this time. We're still having discussions around the skill set and what that position needs to play within all of the changes that have happened in planning and development and operations. So to answer your question specifically, we're not in the recruiting process at this time.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so being new, I guess maybe I don't have the wording right, but, so do we actually have a planner on staff?
We don't have a planner with designation on staff. We still have an, a signed agreement with PCPS, and Jolene Tinkle is a planner. So we still have that contract in place.
Typically, the town of Oles, when looking at large projects, would hire the services of Parkland Community Planning Services, who would then recommend to our CAO where to go from there. I don't believe that we're going to have a process or our CAO would lead us down a path where we are not billing by standard.
There's nothing in legislation that requires us to have a planner on staff. We can manage the application process as we see fit. And I think that we've, there's some learnings that we've had over the last little while, and we want to make sure that when we do go to a formal recruitment process, that we do have our ducks in a row and have learned exactly what we need at this time at the town of Oles.
Mr. Duryea, Counsel Duryea?
Thank you, worship. I see this simply as an opportunity to delegate some authority to two qualified people who understand the development needs within the town offices, so that Mr. McGinnis isn't always faced with having to sign every time that we have a needed signature. And these are qualified people.
You see correctly, and Mr. McGinnis is solely responsible for those signatures, so I trust that he knows what he's doing here. I would like to make sure that, Mr. McGinnis, you do update council at the time of approximately when you might have that study or change of your department. Would that be within the next six months?
There's quite a bit, yes, in the six months for sure. There's quite a bit going on in the PCPS field right now as well. So that's part of determining what skill set and what qualifications we need going forward as well. So they had a very important meeting last week with the Minister of Municipal Affairs, and I haven't totally heard how that meeting went or what timelines. They're looking for, to get answers to some of the systemic problems or challenges that they're seeing right now as well.
Mr. McGinnis, at this time then, would you please put forward your recommended changes to this motion?
Yes. In the recommendation where it says with authority to sign development and building permits, I would like to add authority to sign development, building permits, as well as compliance certificates and town of Oles business licenses.
And further, and we'll get Debbie to add this, and further, compliant, go ahead and say that again.
Add to the development and building permits, compliance certificates and town of Oles business licenses.
Very good. And you've captured that well, Debbie. So that would be the motion, including the captioned. Am I correct?
Correct.
I would just ask a counselor at this time then, if you would like to put your name to that motion. Somebody who hasn't made a motion, Counselor Walsh?
Yeah, I move that effective February 10th, 2014, Mr. Scott Chant and Ms. Carrie Kelman be appointed as development officers for the town of Oles with authority to sign development and building permit applications, compliance certificates and business licenses, as delegated by the chief administrative officer.
Very good. Any further questions or comments? We have some clarity. Everybody's clear on this now. We will have a report back from our CAO once he has more detail on Parkland Community Planning Services and our direction where, that he wants to go with his staff. I would probably say closer to three to four months rather than six months.
Thank you.
Very good. I'll call for the motion then, those in favor. Opposed? That's carried. Thank you. All right, we're moving down then to item nine, reports from council. And at this time, I will leave the floor open to any, and any counselors that wish to report any upcoming events or businesses they've attended to. Normally, we would do the full report at the end of the month with our minutes. I will open the floor at this time. Counselor Barishow?
Thank you, worship. I'm just going to make a short report, as I will be away, likely be away for the next council meeting. But May 10th is Crime Prevention Week. Here in the town of Oles, the, they'll be doing a, they'll be set up at the Legion for that day. According to Chief Sangster, the, they're getting a new recruit right from the depot, yeah. The, they're getting a new recruit here in Oles, so they're excited about that. I mentioned that there was a jump in property crime in September, and this summer, they're going to work to keep the bike patrol going. They found some really good results with the, with the bike patrol, their ability to work with, speak with some of the kids and just keep a different sort of level of surveillance, and that's not the word I'm looking for, but in the interest of time, it's the one I'm going to use around town. Engagement, yeah, something like that. That's all I had to say.
Thank you, Counselor Barishow. Does any other counselor wish to speak at this time? Counselor Overwater?
Thank you, worship. I as well won't be here for the next couple council meetings. So our Mountain View Regional Waste Management Commission, as I stated before, we broke up into three different committees. And now we're in the process of actually getting some policies in place that will be sent off to municipal affairs, probably within the next three to, three months or so. And they are anxiously waiting for those. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Counselor Duryea?
Thank you, worship. In response to a thought from Mr. McGinnis about Parkland Community Planning Services, their group did meet with the minister, and I will send this email to Debbie if she wants it. But let me just quote a little bit from the response from Dion Como. "The minister has encouraged that a large group was working together and expressed that this was the regional collaborative effort," excuse me, "this was what the regional collaborative effort is all about." And he detailed that there would be changes effective April 1st, but would not elaborate on those changes. So changes will be coming, hopefully for the good. So then, following that, the PCPS have moved to increase member rates for the upcoming contract to $120 for a planner, $90 per hour for a planning technician, and $70 per hour for an admin effective April 1st, 2014. And hopefully, this will get them on the right track. They have been in the red, they've used up all their reserves, and are looking for a way to continue on as an organization. And so I think that's probably the most, two important things from the email that I received that I want to report about Parkland Community Planning Services. Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of all the elected officials around the table, I would like to thank Counselor Walsh for the beautiful portrait that he took very patiently with council. And we will be displaying those for the public in the front hall. Thank you, Counselor Walsh. May I get a motion then to accept these reports for information? Counselor Bennett?
I move that the reports from elected officials for the period ending February 10th, 2014, be received for information.
I would call for the vote, those in favor. That is carried. Thank you. Monthly cash statement, none. Counts payable, none. I do believe that's the end of the month though, is it not? Thank you. That will be at the end of the month for February. Now, page 16, please. Item 12, correspondence and information. I would ask, Counselor Walsh, would you like to put a motion on the floor for that at this time, and we'll go forward?
I move that the correspondence and information report ending February 10th, 2014, be received for information.
Thank you. Before I speak to items, I would ask council if they have any questions to any of these items. Counselor Overwater?
Thank you, worship. It's regarding the letter from Minister of Municipal Affairs Ken Hughes regarding the community revitalization levy. If the province is not doing that anymore, and if we have accepted the town of Oles, uptown Oles area redevelopment plan, how will that affect us if they are not going to be helping?
to be helping out with that anymore?
Thank you. That would be my question as well. I would ask our CEO at this time if he could explain the process on where we go from there.
Yes, this letter was quite a blow to us when we received it last week. There certainly was no indication from any quarters that this program was looking at any changes, and in fact, it still is in legislation. So, a couple of things. There is an Uptown Olds meeting on Wednesday night where I'll ask Mr. Wagstaff to take this forward, and I think that we need to continue on and sort of continue the work that we had planned in our strategy to apply for CRL. The working committee that Deb Godfrey heads up did meet subsequent to the letter coming in, and their resolve was not to just lay down. So they will be working on a strategy, and that strategy will have a political component to it, so we'll be asking council to sort of rise up and do some politicking on this issue. I just don't think that the process here was fair. We put a ton of time and effort and community engagement into this process, and never once were suggested that, you know, the program was being reviewed. I can understand last week, you know, with the discussions around the funding of education, how the community revitalization levy could be seen as taking away from education, but that's just not the way that the program works. The education piece is funded out of other revenue tools that provincial government has. So we need to sit down. I think it would be a mistake to sort of just say the things that were going to be included in the community revitalization levy work in the Uptown area can't happen. I think that would be a mistake. So what the discussions I've had with operations, certainly we're going to continue to move forward with the replacement of water and sewer lines, redo the road, redo the sidewalks. The above-ground stuff was really the piece that the CRL was going to fund, so the street furniture, the street lighting, those types of things. So we need to regroup. We need to see what sort of impact that funding certain components of the CRL may have on other projects, and we will endeavor to do that shortly after the meeting on Wednesday with the Uptown to get their input on what impact this announcement may make. But again, I think that we need to write some letters to Minister Hughes and push him on this issue.
Supplemental, Councillor Overwater?
Thank you, Your Worship. Mr. McGinnis, so reading this letter, does this mean that other communities have gotten the CRL, or does that, like, what did they do differently, or do you know that, that they were approved for that levy and we weren't?
Just a matter of timing.
Oh.
We do know that the Town of Cochrane did, and I also know that, I also know that Mr. McGinnis directed his staff to sit on a conference call and ask those very questions to see what and where and how. So we'll be looking, looking over that. I would ask Mr. Wagstaff if you would please forward me the agenda for the Uptown Olds meeting. As Councillor Harper is away, I will be the ex officio attending on her behalf, so that would be great. Thank you. Any further questions on any items? Councillor Durye?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm just wondering, Your Worship, about any adverse effects from the Alberta Transportation Travis Program, and how does that fit in with what we're trying to do as more and more larger vehicles are moving their way across 27 through the Town of Olds?
Thank you. That would be a question. Also, I would also ask and add to that as supplemental, Mr. McGinnis, I do note that is looking for a signature from the mayor on there, and could you give us our status on that?
I'll start and maybe I'll ask Scott to chime in. I think that Travis Program has been a great program. There is the permitting and the actual quantification of certain types of loads that come through town. We at least have some idea of what that is and get some feedback on what's moving through our community. So to me, it's been a really good program that certainly, it seems as though the government wants, the provincial government wants to continue with and improve. Anything to add, Scott?
No, I'd like to echo those thoughts too, but it does just make people aware, like, even the trucking outfits are aware of the routes going through town. We just had one the other day that, you know, they had an oversized load, and it prompted them to call us, and we found out that they couldn't make it through town, so they were going to have to reroute and go another avenue. So it's getting everybody to talk, so the trucks just don't show up here and creating a bottleneck, especially across railway tracks. That's been valuable.
Thank you. Councillor Barishel?
Yes, thank you. Do you have any information on, since the opening of Stony Trails, there's been less over-dimensional loads going through our community? Do we have any statistics on that? I personally don't see a lot of, a lot of wide loads going through our community.
The main traffic we see, they're heading across Highway 22 and then going north, so the Stony Trail has no, had no effect on nor was they're coming up the Deerfoot and cutting across, so they're either coming across here or, you know, Cremona or Didsbury. So I haven't seen a decrease in traffic, no.
Thank you. In regards to this item then, it is an action item, and I would, I would believe I would have to put a motion on the floor then, that the, it is addressed to myself, and it will be looking for review and signature. Should we not put a motion from council stating that the mayor will sign those documents? Mr. McGinnis? May I get a motion in that regard, please? That's page 24, Mr. Durye, if you would like to note that the department will forward two copies of an agreement for review and signature by the mayor and I believe CEO, which outlines the responsibilities of both parties under Travis MJ Permit Program. So I believe that would be the grant permission for signature. Thank you.
So I would move, Your Worship, that under the mayor's signature, we acknowledge and confirm our commitment to ensuring an efficient one-stop shop overweight, over-dimensional permitting program in Alberta, well, in Olds, I guess, and forward two copies of such agreement, of such signed agreement to the Alberta Transportation Ministry.
Thank you. Further questions? Hearing that, I call for the vote. Those in favor? That is carried. I would like at this time, I do see our, oh, I'm sorry, Councillor Overwater?
Thank you, Your Worship. I just have a question regarding the letter from the mayor from the City of Red Deer regarding the ambulance.
That was what I was putting on the floor at this moment.
Oh, okay.
Very good. We do have our fire chief and Mr. McGinnis with us at this time, so I did prepare them and note that we would be having some questions in that regard. So we will start with yourself. Do you have questions?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. I was just wondering how that was going to impact if that carries through with us not having a dispatch in Red Deer and them going to Edmonton, Calgary and Peace River. Is that going to have a major impact on the 300 and some odd thousand people in this area?
Our ambulance dispatch services have never been dispatched out of Red Deer. They were out of Stars, and then when the commission decommissioned, it went immediately to Alberta Health Services out of Calgary dispatch there. We are, our fire dispatch is out of Red Deer. As far as fire dispatch goes, this won't have an impact. It'll continue. We did notice though, when it did go from a consolidated dispatch of fire and ambulance to just the province taking care of the ambulance dispatch, we've had a real disconnect between fire and, we can't communicate with them. We have to rely on what they call a MDT terminal, a mobile data terminal. So basically Calgary dispatch, the EMS, has to send messages or get a hold of Red Deer dispatch to have us, fire, go to calls that where the ambulance is requesting us. We don't, we have no automatic dispatch with them. They have to actually phone and ask us to show up. With the exception of MVC, motor vehicle collisions, we go automatically to those. It's been, it's been challenging. There's been, Mr. Chant sits as one of my captains in the fire department, he can attest to this, that there's been delays, but this, having Red Deer lose their ambulance dispatch services, as it is right now, won't impact us. If they kept it though, it'd be really nice to have this area go to them so that we could work together again.
So in your explanation shared, I see then you would, don't have any concerns about Olds with this letter that was sent to MLA Bruce Rowe. I found that interesting, coming from Red Deer mayor to, to our...
Three Hills and E Hill County are, they're currently dispatched fire and ambulance from Red Deer, so the MLA is a representative of our area, and I think when they refer to the community, they mean that area there. We do have concerns the way it is now with this dispatch system. It's been going on for years now. The Fire Chiefs Association has been really talking about it. We all agree that consolidated dispatch is what needs to happen between fire and ambulance. So if Red Deer dispatch was able to keep their ambulance services, I would really want to try and get on board with that, get our area back to where we can actually communicate to each other.
Do I hear you saying that we should support a letter of some sort from the Town of Olds at this time in concurrent, in concurrence with our, our view? Or is that something that we should?
There needs to be a better means of communication between fire and EMS on the dispatch side of things.
Councillor Barishel?
I understand what Chief Thompson's saying, but they're talking about two different things. They're just moving the dispatch to Calgary, and Red Deer doesn't want them to move, but it doesn't have anything to do, as far as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, with the service we receive from ambulance, other than the calls go to Calgary instead of to Red Deer. So they're closing one office, making one, I'm assuming, a little bit bigger. Their concerns with Red Deer is that the people in Calgary don't understand the logistics of the Red Deer, an area that they're serving now, but as far as ambulance service, technically we shouldn't see a change, I'm assuming, and if anybody wants to correct me. The talking of the, the work between the fire and the ambulance, I mean, is, has nothing to do with this letter.
I'll leave that up to our CAO then and our fire chief at, in the future, if they choose to ask council to support with a letter, they'll bring that forward. Thank you. Okay, I do have one other note, two other notes here. On page 19, you'll see Alberta Transportation basically sent us a new tool for us to keep in our portfolios with regards to current projects. I found it very interesting and good information to refer back and forth to, just a reminder that if you could pull that out of your agenda, you'd have it handy when you have those questions on what and, what's allowed and what's not allowed, instead of pounding the ground in the door of our CAO all the time. Good information. So that's in your agenda, and that starts on page 19, and it's very good clarification on questions that our citizens ask us today. And finally, I'm hoping council, if you could please go to page 17 in your agenda with regards to the National Dementia Strategy Municipal Resolution and Bill C. 356, that is looking to be brought or completed for healthcare crisis on Alzheimer's and related dementia diseases facing Canada. After reading the strategy, or the proclamation that they're requesting municipalities make, I would say that I am 100% plus in favor of the Town of Olds supporting this, and would ask that you would as well support this bill. It's almost frightening to know that within 10 years, that 1.1 million people will be faced with dementia and Alzheimer's, and yet we need to have some sort of strategy for dementia move forward. Thoughts on your read with regards to this? I do believe that there are thousands of families and care partners that do need to have some sort of strategy to follow for the future, having lived that situation myself in my life. It sure would have helped. So what I'm asking is permission from council, if you so feel fit to move forward with the resolution in support of National Dementia Strategy, and we could most certainly insert Town of Olds in the bottom of this resolution and forward. I would, but if anybody would like to discuss this, I believe the strategy is crucial for the future of Canada. Go ahead, Councillor Barishel.
I, all I can say really is that I agree with you, and I think anybody, it's such a huge problem right now, and it's challenged. I mean, I've gone through it. I imagine most families, you know, at some level have gone through it, and it's something that if we, I'm a little surprised to, I haven't really read a whole lot about where the federal government is on a dementia strategy. I guess if we're, if we're, if we're that far behind, we need to get going, and I think supporting this is, is a fine start for the Town of Olds.
So I believe Councillor Barishel has just put a motion on the floor, and that motion is to, a resolution in support of a National Dementia Strategy, that the Town of Olds supports a resolution in support of a National Dementia Strategy? Yes, councillor? We've been making all these motions. Okay. Sorry. All right, then let's deal with the motion on the floor to accept all reports, and then I would ask council to please move forward with the resolution of support for National Dementia Strategy. Thank you. All right, any further questions to the information? Those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Now, would you like to make a motion, or would you like to continue with that motion? All right. So councillor Barishel has moved that the Town of Olds support a resolution in support of National Dementia Strategy, and we'll move forward and fill that out properly and send that into the federal government. Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Councillor Walsh?
Yeah, it also suggesting that it go through FCM also, so I would suggest both. Show of support.
We will make sure that that gets done, and I believe that will be put on the floor at our federal Canadian municipalities. Very good. Any further questions? Those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. I, at this time, have the pleasure to ask the new Olds-Albertan gentleman that is here if you would like to share your name with us.
I'm Joseph.
Joseph, welcome. So the procedure that we will follow as of now is we will take a 10-minute recess that will give you an opportunity, along with your colleague, to ask council and/or staff questions, and then we will reconvene for a closed item regarding a labor issue. So we will take a 10-minute recess at this time.
Olds Community TV, your go-to channel for news and information in Olds, Alberta.